Call to order the Iredell County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, July 19th, 2016. This time, I ask everyone to please bow your head in silent prayer and reflection. You'll please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To everyone who's here. At this time, Mr. Smith, if you could review any adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to remove two items under closed session. Item A, which is economic development, and that's general statute reference 143-318-11, subsection A4. And item D, which is personnel, same reference but subsection A6. And I would also like to remind everyone that we'll be recessing tonight until next week instead of adjourned.
The motion to adopt the agenda is adjusted by Mr. Smith's.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman's light sign, motion carries unanimously. At this point, there are no special recognitions or rewards this evening. We'll move on to item seven, which is appointments before the board. We have Ms. Anna Rice, representing the Iredell County Council on Aging, who will present an update on the home and community care block grant funding plan. And Ms. Rice, we do want to extend our condolences to you for the loss of your mother.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm here this evening to present Iredell's proposed 2017 Aging Funding Plan for your review and consideration. I want to frame this plan with just a few comments about aging in our county and what our 60-plus population looks like now. It now exceeds some 34,000 people, and not unlike the state as a whole, our population shows significant growth. Although at present, Iredell County is one of only 35 counties in the state to have more people under age 17 than people over 60 years of age. But here's the rub: Since 2014, the 60-plus population has been outpacing the 17-and-under crowd, and in fact, in just a few short years, estimated to be around 2019, the 60-plus population will surpass the younger group, skyrocketing to over 58,000 people age 60 and over in just 18 short years. Incredible. And so, the silver tsunami continues, and baby boomers now of age need, and more importantly, qualify for aging services and programs. Many of us born between 49 and 64 are learning about and turning to the service system to help care for parents and other aging relatives in their 70s, 80s, and even 90s. Our county, like the entire state, faces the challenge of providing services for the remaining members of the Greatest Generation, those who were young during World War II and are now in their late 80s and older, as well as providing services for the young old as they age and become more vulnerable. For our county, this means the Council on Aging will continue to provide services along the continuum of care, adjusting to the new attitudes of the baby boomers needing services while helping our frail elderly stay in their homes, in their communities, as long as possible. As indicated in the 2017 Aging Funding Plan, we'll continue providing vital services such as transportation to medical appointments as well as the grocery store. We'll help the 72-year-old double amputee who lives alone with little to no family support. We'll help her with housework and laundry, shopping, and running errands with our chore service. We'll help the devoted couple married for 50-plus years remain at home. He is taking care of her 24/7 as she suffers from post-Paleo syndrome and a fall that caused significant damage to her left leg. She is bed-bound, and we provide personal care services to her so she may remain at home where she is most comfortable. We have provided services to this couple since 2007. So COA respite services mean the loyal husband can leave the house at least once or twice a week to get groceries, run errands, or even mow the yard, which he still does. But at any rate, it gives him a break from the constant demands of caregiving. For others, we'll work with elder center to provide placement for a loved one to attend the adult daycare center, enriching the life of the older adult attending the center while giving the loved one a chance to taste life beyond his or her all-consuming caregiving role. We'll continue providing nutrition service, realizing the important role diet plays in maintaining and improving health by offering our congregate or group meals in Mooresville, Troutman, Statesville, and Harmony, providing a gathering place for seniors to enjoy a balanced meal and that all-important social contact on a daily basis. We'll help that now-single senior, having lost his spouse of 59 years, learn to live again, coming to the site each day to not only enjoy a hot meal but actually volunteering to help other participants needing assistance, realizing again the importance of having purpose and feeling needed. For those too frail to leave the house, volunteers will deliver a meal to the lone, isolated senior dealing with too many infirmities to prepare a balanced meal. We'll help our 92-year-old Mooresville, World War II veteran, a gunner, recently recognized by the French for his service, remain at his home where he's most comfortable, regaling our volunteers with war stories each day. And what about our 102-year-old Statesville woman who still lives alone on Maple Street but is unable to prepare a meal each day? And for seniors needing a variety of services, we'll continue providing countless opportunities at both our Iredell Senior Center here in Statesville and our South Iredell Senior Center in Mooresville, both having been certified as Centers of Excellence by the North Carolina Division of Aging and Adult Services. What kinds of services are offered at the senior centers? Maybe it's mahjong to keep the mental skills sharp? What about bridge, canasta, and other card games? It could be helping completing federal or state income tax forms, or deciding on a Medicare Part D plan during open enrollment. Or even art, line dancing that keeps participants moving and in shape, or writing senior memories that leaves a legacy for grandchildren. There's learning to use the computer or taking a driver's refresher course, or participating in a caregiver support group or a book group, or maybe even getting help with the latest smartphone or iPad. Yes, we're doing that, too. And what about seniors theater, the group that writes their own plays and then visits elementary school children to perform, reminding our young children that aging isn't synonymous with disability or frailty? And what about a living with diabetes class, or water exercise, or Tai Chi to improve balance and prevent falls? Consider Ruby, our 84-year-old participant at our South Iredell Senior Center. Ruby is a caregiver to her 91-year-old sister, and incredibly, visits and stays in touch with eight other shut-ins from her church each week, all the while maintaining her yard and home, with the exception, she emphasized to me, of cleaning her gutters and home repairs. I let her off the hook on that one. But she felt she wasn't taking care of herself, so two years ago, she decided to join the exercise classes. Now she wouldn't miss the sit-and-fit class as well as walk-away-the-pound classes that focuses on cardiovascular health. She says the fitness classes inspire her to stay active every day, noting the classes have, in her words, and I quote, "made a world of difference in the way she feels and what she is able to do on her own," and bless her for others. What a testament. Iredell's Home and Community Care Block Committee met in late April to consider the 2017 Aging Funding Plan. Thankfully, we learned the Older Americans Act funding for our county was cut less than $500 this fiscal year. I had to chuckle when I realized we were thankful it was only a small cut and not a big cut. You know, that says millions about where we are today. The group considered current service levels and heard about waiting lists for services. And in the end, the funding plan remained essentially the same as the year just ended. Older Americans Act dollars, which are in reality what is called Home and Community Care Block Grant monies in North Carolina, require a minimum 10% local matching fund. And the county has helped the COA meet this requirement, and in doing so, brings back $9 in federal funds for every dollar contributed by the county. And we appreciate this vital support. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, and appreciate your consideration in approving the 2017 Aging Funding Plan.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners?
I would like to make some. First of all, I just want to tell you, in the past year, both of my parents grew old and passed away, and I will tell you that I called Ms. Rice and asked for her advice in the years leading up to this. And she is a real asset and a treasure to the citizens of our county and to me personally. And I can't say enough about what she and her organization do, but also about her personally. If I could just to emphasize a point from a different perspective. She was telling you a little bit about what they're doing now, and if you would allow me to take you down a little bit of math, and it won't be a lot, but World War II ended in '45. Unlike current wars where people can jump in an airplane and in a couple of days be out of theater and back in the States, most of them were part of occupational forces, and they took a slow boat home. So most of our World War II vets came home in '46, '45, and '46, and the boomers started appearing in '47. And a lot's been talked about the financial impact as the boomers hit and they start collecting on so -- they quit paying income tax, and they start collecting Social Security benefits when they hit age 62 or 67, or Medicare benefits when they hit age 65. If you just do the math, at age 67, the boomers that were born in '46, they hit that in 2013. The ones, of course, born in '47, they hit that in 2014. Here we are in 2016. It has just started.
Absolutely.
Okay? It has just started. And there's really two different kind of waves that we, in the political figures, at least at the federal level, they're looking at what's the impact on Social Security and on Medicare, because people are going from contributing to the tax base to now they're drawing the benefits from the Treasury. Speed, play that tape forward a few more years, and it's not just that they're receiving a check. Now we're talking about, you know, how do they get to the doctor and all that stuff? Because one of the huge changes that has taken place in the past five decades is we went from being a nation that had four or five children per married couple who remained married, to now we have basically the replacement birth rate of 2.1 or so. And people are more mobile, and then you also have these fragmented family units. So it used to be that somebody had to take care of granny and granddad, and there were multiple children, most of whom lived in the same community, that could provide that care. We're in a situation now where there's fewer offspring to provide that care, and in many cases, they don't live in the same community. So kind of one of the -- I really see one of the great debates and one of the great issues that are going to be facing us is at what, you know, my personal opinion is government can't fill that void. It's too great, we can't fill that void, yet we're in an economy where it's pretty hard for an employee to go to an employer and say, "I need to change. You need to move me back closer to home," or something like that. It's not as easy to do, and it's not as easy for them to just say, "I'm going to quit my job and get a new job closer to home," when the unemployment picture is like it is today. So my point is, is that I just wanted to make, is that the work that you're doing and the work that she's doing for us is incredibly important. It's going to become a bigger concern as the boomers go from just collecting Social Security and medical benefits to the point where they're going to need some sort of assistance in not just going to the doctor, but having somebody there who can explain what the doctor said to the other family members who may live remotely and stuff. It's a difficult situation. It's going to be some challenging times. I'm glad that we have Ms. Rice leading the helm, and what you're doing is awfully important. We thank you very much for your service.
Thank you for your kind words, Mr. Robertson.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
Ms. Rice, do you have a department that provides the service of unclogging the remote control for the TV?
No, but we do get calls on that frequently.
Oh, yes.
You may look for your budget to exponentially increase.
We've had great fun. If I can take just a minute here, we've had a high school senior coming to do the classes for the smartphones and iPads, and it's been great fun seeing our older adults, who oftentimes have grandchildren living far away, to have that interaction, and it's been a win-win, I think, for both people, the older adults. But they've had a great time with that, so maybe we need to take up the remote controls as well.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Ms. Rice, I just do want to express our collective appreciation for the efforts of your staff and your volunteers as you've worked to maintain the quality of life for so many of our elderly citizens and to be able to help them stay in their homes.
Absolutely.
And that, in and of itself, is not only a benefit to them, but it's a benefit to all of society in terms of costs being kept low, and it's just a win-win. And of course, as you've noted, the silver tsunami, there's just going to be an increase in demand for the services that your organization and others provide, and that will have to get more creative.
Absolutely.
As we go forward, to be able to leverage all of our resources to be able to meet these goals. So thank you again.
Thank you.
At this time, we will move on to item B and number six, which is a requested appointment for the board by Mr. Chad Elliott, who is a retiree from our Sheriff's Department, who is requesting a change in Iredell County Personnel Policy as it relates to healthcare, health insurance.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Elliott?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here today and hear me. I want to also address that this is no reflection upon the Iredell County Sheriff's Office. I've served with them for 14.5 years, and I have the utmost respect for Darren Campbell and the deputies that are at the Sheriff's Office, and even before that, Philip Redmond, Sheriff Redmond, before that time, the utmost respect for them. So this is no reflection upon the Sheriff's Office. In March of 2015, I was diagnosed with a rare cancerous disease that attacked my kidneys. During this time, I was unable to work and immediately began chemotherapy in preparation for stem cell transplant. Unfortunately, at Duke Hospital, I received a stem cell transplant, putting the cancerous disease in remission. Unfortunately, my kidneys did not recover, causing me to receive life-saving dialysis every day. The dialysis that I do at this time is peritoneal dialysis from my home. After six months of remission, I was placed on the kidney transplants list. I spoke with my doctor, who recommended I retire and take disability until I received a kidney and was unable to return to work until I was able to return back to work to finish my career. In May of 2016, I sat down with the Iredell County Human Resources to fill out my insurance paperwork for retirement. During this time, Human Resources informed me, since I had Medicare that I had received prior before the meeting with Human Resources, it may be an issue that I received Cigna insurance. At that time, Human Resources provided the policy for retirees in front of me, and it basically said, it said word for word, "Any employee who retires under the local government retirement system is eligible to remain in the county's healthcare program until age 65 or obtain Medicare, whichever is first." I had received Medicare before retirement. After receiving the information, I produced documentation from the Medicare End-Stage Rental Disease Manual, which defended my stand on receiving Medicare. The county chose not to provide me with the Cigna insurance at the 50% reduced rate for retirement because I had Medicare. As a result of the decision, I lost my LifeSource contract involving kidney transplant covered 100% underneath Cigna, which is an awesome carrier, and my LifeSource contract for post-stem cell transplant at 100% till this September. Furthermore, I was put on the inactive list for kidney transplant list until I found a secondary insurance for Medicare for possible future procedure, whether it be cadaver or living donor. This may have caused me of getting me myself my kidney during this time. I'm still not on the list. I'm considered inactive until everything goes through. The information, I want to also say something, too. I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Smith. He worked with me very hard, and I appreciate that. He granted some things that were spectacular to me, honestly, and thank you for that. In the guidelines for Medicare, in 10.2 in the Medicare Guideline Book that I had produced to Human Resources, I'm going to quote this basically, word for word, what it says, "There's a coordination period with Medicare end-stage renal disease. It's for 30 months, which means, once you get your Medicare because of end-stage renal disease, Medicare," which is a completely different entity from Medicare. I think that a lot of times that people look at Medicare and say, "Oh, that's for persons that are 65 years of age." Well, there are times, because end-stage renal disease is such an important topic with the federal government, they have their own little entity over here, according to what my readings are and what I have been told. So in guidelines 10.2, it's about the coordination period of the 30 months. It says Medicare benefits are secondary to benefits payable under a GHP for group health provider for individuals eligible for or entitled to benefits on the basis of end-stage renal disease during a period up to 30 months. If Medicare was not the proper primary payer for the individual on the basis of age or disability, at the time this individual becomes eligible or entitled to Medicare on the basis of end-stage renal disease. Which means I've been on Medicare for 12 months. The coordination period would only be an additional 18 months at this time approximately. 10.9B, coordination of benefits, arranges between private plans, whether based on state law or private agreements, cannot supersede federal law that makes Medicare secondary payer to group health insurance in certain situations, which basically, my understanding is federal law supersedes state law. Coordination period 70.3 in the booklet, a GHP group health provider may not take into account that an individual is eligible for or entitled to Medicare benefits on the basis of the end-stage renal disease during the coordination period, the 30 months. Basically, what that's saying is it's invisible, in layman's terms, that during that 30 months, Medicare is invisible. It can't even be taken into the account because of end-stage renal disease. Now, under 1862 lowercase b, one uppercase c, lowercase i, act provides that group health insurance may not differentiate in the benefits they provide between individuals who do not have end-stage renal disease and other individuals covered under the plan on the basis of the existence of end-stage renal disease, the need for renal dialysis or any other manner. Actions that constitute in the planned benefits and that may also constitute, take into account, Medicare eligibility or entitlement include, but are not limited to, the following: terminating coverage of individuals with ESRD for reasons that would not be the basis for terminating individuals who do not have end-stage renal disease. Retired employees or employed, section 70.4, beneficiaries who are eligible for or entitled to Medicare on the basis of the end-stage renal disease and who are covered by a group health provider, without regard to the number of individuals employed and regardless of the current employment status during the first 30 months, which is the coordination period, of end-stage renal disease-based Medicare eligibility or entitlement. This basically means whether I'm employed or retired, and regardless of the individuals employed, I'm entitled to I'm entitled to the 30-month coordination period. Section 20.0. The provision applies regardless of the number of employees employed by the employer and regardless of whether the individual or other family member has current employment status. The end-stage renal disease provision applies to former as well to current employees. The provision applies where an individual is eligible for Medicare based on end-stage renal disease and where an individual is entitled to Medicare based on end-stage renal disease. Basically, what this is saying, doesn't matter how many employees are employed by the employer, whether the individual or other family members has current employment status. Now, with that said, what had happened through this event? The decision was made, because the policy stated, I had Medicare, or whichever is first, I was dropped. By my readings, from the End-Stage Renal Disease Manual, says during that 30-month coordination period, it can't even be taken into an account that I have Medicare. The decision was made that the Cigna insurance was dropped at that time. Now, think about this. If a person in the same situation with me who has their time served and has been able to retire on the basis of disability, they would be offered the Cigna insurance. But because I had Medicare, I wasn't. There's a differentiation there, and the reason being, in my opinion, there's a differentiation there because it would still be offered to somebody, even though the Medicare policy is supposed to stay invisible for 30 days. Basically saying, I can't be treated any differently because of the end-stage renal disease for 30 months. I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer this. But to my knowledge, that's what I've read from here. And thank you.
Elliot, I just want to say, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
And we appreciate you bringing, elevating this issue to us to be able to consider it as a matter of policy, but it's also a matter of compliance with the law.
Yes, sir.
And also a matter of evaluating where there is choices that we can make.
Yes, sir.
One way or the other, what are the, we need to be able to evaluate the impact, the second and third order effects, not just in your matter, but as it applies to all of our employees.
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, we need, obviously, to be able to have a policy that people can have assurance that it's going to be applied to everyone. And so, whatever those financial ramifications are, we have to have a balancing act between maintaining the financial integrity of our healthcare policy and system and plan as it currently exists. So, you've described an issue that involves a complex interaction between not only our county policy and plan, but state and federal regulations.
Yes, sir.
Which will take, I think, a considerable amount of review and digging into, understanding that we are united with you in wanting to reach a satisfactory conclusion that is fair to all of our employees, is fair to, is sustainable in terms of finances, but mostly, and most importantly, is in compliance with the law.
Yes, sir.
And whether that's at the federal, state level. So, I know you've had discussions at length and in detail with Mr. Smith and personnel. And at this point, we just need to make some policy decisions, but we need a lot more information.
Sure.
And we would ask that you avail yourself to be involved in that process as we work through the various issues and figure out how to apply an unusual situation. And our hope is that you are able to be able to be successfully treated and get that transplant and be able to return to duty.
May I speak, Mr. Mallory?
Yes, please.
My goal is to get that kidney, get it paid for, so I can come back and finish my career. I've said that from the very get-go. Unfortunately, I've had to take the advice from my doctor to do what I need to do. I only had 10 more years. I'm vetted here in this county. I've been here 14.5 years. I've got two wonderful children, go to a great school. Couldn't ask for any better. I'm not planning to go anywhere. My plan is to come back and work for Sheriff Campbell and serve this county.
We appreciate your willingness to continue to serve. And I'd just open it up to the other commissioners for any comments. We had discussed briefly having you get together with our staff, together with two of our commissioners, and our legal team, to be able to evaluate all the ins and outs of, like I say, this rather complex issue. But are there some other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, having given this thing some thought here, here, I think, is the crux of the matter, if I can say it that way. Mr. Elliott is asking that affordable insurance be provided to him, given his years of faithful service. And that seems to be a very reasonable request in return for what he's done for the county. The problem is, from the county's perspective, the county's not buying insurance coverage. They're also buying claims because a good portion of this insurance were self-insured, and we have stop laws. And the decisions that we make affect not Mr. Elliott, but they could potentially affect everyone who falls in this retired employee's health insurance plan, which I think is around 94. But the county's concern is that we would also, if we do it for Mr. Elliott, we'd have to do it for everyone else. Well, what are the costs associated with those claims? And that's a factor of how much is each potential claim and how many people would be involved? And nobody can really put a number on that. But you would potentially expose yourself to significant financial risk. But having assumed that responsibility, what is the impact on existing employees and the insurance they would have to pay if they decided to cover their spouse or their children or whoever? How was it going to negatively impact those things? So, that is the county's concern, and that's a reasonable concern. I think any reasonable person could say that you have two reasonable people here with two reasonable concerns. I will say, in regard to the county manager, I think he has acted responsibly and reasonably, and I think to a great degree compassionately. But I think he's come to the point where his chief financial steward of the county, he's gone about as far as he feels comfortable. And if it's going to do more than he's doing, it needs to have a policy decision from this board. Maybe I made a mistake, but I agreed earlier to be a part of this subcommittee and help address this issue. I would like to ask, and I have, this is not a criticism of anybody. I've heard, "Well, our attorney said this, and our attorney said that." Before we go in this, I would like a definitive written legal opinion as to whether federal law explicitly says that we must pay for Mr. Elliott's insurance, or are we fulfilling the law when we offer him insurance? And I think that's a great point of contention between both parties here. Mr. Elliott feels that we should provide him with the insurance, and we feel that we should offer him the insurance. And the county staff feels at this point they've met the obligation of the law by offering it. I'm not a lawyer, and I'm certainly not an expert on federal laws that relates to healthcare and so forth. But that is something that needs to be nailed down. Let's let that lawyer earn his pay, and let's have that in writing. And I think if we can get a definitive written opinion on that, I think that'll go a long way toward helping reconcile some of these differences and come to a better understanding.
May I say something?
Please.
Yes, sir. Medicare guidelines, especially with the end-stage renal disease, if a person does assume Medicare, after the 30-month coordination period, it's going to flip. Say, for instance, if you have Cigna, and a person is diagnosed with end-stage renal disease, they choose to take the Medicare, and they have Cigna at the same time. After that coordination period, it flips. Medicare becomes the primary. They take the hit. Cigna becomes secondary. If that'll help anywhere with the opinion or discussions amongst the attorneys, please check, because it says it specifically in the guidelines. If it comes to a cost issue or something, it will flip.
Well, I hope that we'll have a range of options presented to us, where we can, you know, it's not necessarily either-or.
Sure.
There may be some options that enable you to receive the level of treatment that you need at an affordable amount, which doesn't put at risk the county's financial system of healthcare. Because we have to extrapolate this out to not just your situation, but potentially many others. And so, it's a matter of achieving a balancing act and finding that sweet spot. And I think that, understanding, as Commissioner Johnson said, what are our legal responsibilities? And then finding out, putting costs associated with different policy options, you know, whether we can craft something that's a creative way of being able to address the issue in a way that is responsible and compassionate and which can potentially provide, you know, a return to duty.
Sure.
Yourself or any other employee that's in that non-retiree position, but a disabled position.
Well, the goal is, is once I do get the kidney transplant, eventually I will come off of disability through the state and the federal government. That's going to happen. The goal is, it'll be ludicrous for me not to return and finish out 10 years. Do that stand on top of my head.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you for your time, for hearing me today. And thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. We'll now move on to public hearings in item eight. The first is a public hearing for consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Sparrow. And I believe that Mr. Merrick will present that to us.
Good evening, Chairman Mallory, county commissioners and staff. Statesville Regional Development comes before you tonight in support of a request for an industrial development grant for a company that is looking to expand its existing Statesville operation. We have been working with this company under the codename Project Sparrow. The project involves the physical expansion of their current building, the acquisition and installation of new capital equipment, and the creation of new jobs. This is a competitive project, and the company wishes to remain anonymous at this time as they are also considering alternate locations in North America. We anticipate a decision in the fourth quarter of 2016. If Statesville is selected, construction would begin in the second quarter of 2017. When complete, Project Sparrow would create 25 net new jobs and result in an additional $70 million in new taxable investment in the community. Statesville Regional Development is pleased to recommend, in accordance with the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive Policy, that an unnamed company known as Project Sparrow will be granted a performance-based incentive as follows. The improvement period will be January 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018. The new investment will be $70 million with approximately $4 million in real property and $66 million in capital equipment. 25 new jobs will be created. These jobs will pay in excess of the county average wage and will include at least 50% of the cost of employee healthcare coverage. The incentive will be 80% of the taxable revenue on new investment over five years, as specified by the county policy, or a total incentive of $1,125,000. This incentive is self-funding and self-limiting. No payment will be made until the company has paid its property taxes in full. And if the company does not meet the investment goals as stated, they will not receive the grant. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Mr. Merrick, was that 1.125 or 1.225?
1.225. Did I say 125? I meant 1.225. Thank you.
Are there any questions from commissioners? At this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that has signed up? I don't have anyone that's signed up on the list, but if anyone is here that would like to be heard, please so do so. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that this is an expansion of an existing facility along with capital equipment. And I would make the motion that we approve this economic incentive grant for $1.225,000 over a five-year period based on this company's investment of $70 million. And that is contingent upon the contract being executed within 180 days.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed to like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Merrick, for the considerable amount of time that you and your staff have put in on this project. And we look forward to a positive resolution and an announcement in the near future.
Thank you, Chairman, and commissioners.
We'll now move to item 8B, which is a public hearing to consider a request from Todd Combs to rezone 1.4 acres from residential agricultural to residential office. Mr. Matthew Todd from...
Good evening to the board. The request before us tonight for the rezoning is outlined in blue on the screen. Currently zoned RA. The request is to go to RO, residential office, 1.4 acres. Matches the 2030 Horizon Plan. The lot adjacent is also already zoned commercial. And traffic impacts from the proposed use will not exceed the road capacity. And the planning board did recommend 7O to approve this request. That's the land use plan showing medium-density residential. Medium-density residential does allow for small-scale commercial uses. There's an area of the property. There's an existing house there on the corner with some other outbuildings. It's actually four individual parcels owned by the same individual. Across the property is the Town of Davidson's jurisdiction with Ingersoll Rand property. A few pictures of the property. That's the existing house. That's looking north on 115 at the adjacent properties across 115 with the railroad tracks and south on 115. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board this time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board at this time.
Any questions from Mr. Todd?
So basically, planning staff and the planning board both agree this is, this is a very good use for that property at this time, and there should be no problem, correct?
That's correct, and we did not receive any calls over the last couple of months.
Very good.
Any further questions, comments? At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open, and there is no one that has signed up to be heard. I would ask any members of the audience present if you would like to be heard. Hearing or seeing none, close this public hearing. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend in favor of the zoning map amendment and to make it final that approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest and for the good of the 2030 Horizon Plan, because it is in hominid which area is adjacent to commercial zone property. That's my motion.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. Any further discussion?
I think it's reasonable to assume, Mr. Chairman, that that's gonna be increasingly even that far down south, a commercial corridor, and I think that that's probably about as least offensive development that you could have to begin with, so I see no problem with it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item seven C, it's a public hearing to consider a request from Fred Blake to allow an expansion of seven hundred and eighty square feet within a residential agricultural district. Mr. Todd, would you please summarize?
Yes, the, this request we have before us now is an expansion of an existing non-conforming business, being that it was a business prior nineteen ninety when the county had implemented countywide zoning. Over the years, it's been used commercially. In two thousand and eleven, I believe the Board of Adjustment approved a change in non-conforming use, but in order for them to expand the property, the processes that they become, they come before the Board of Commissioners. There's four criteria that the board's decision that they should consider, and that is, I'll read over them. The enlargement will not cause substantial harm to the adjoining property owners. The enlargement will not result in traffic increases beyond the capacity of the road serving said use. The enlargement will not result in emissions of smoke, fumes, noise, odor, or dust which will be detrimental to the character of the district or to the health, safety, or general welfare of the community. And the enlargement will maintain all minimum setbacks and buffer requirements of the use district in which said use would be permitted. Planning board did recommend seven-zero to approve this request. It's currently zoned RA. You can see the property outlined in blue on the screen off Triplet Road. It's in low-density residential area in the 2030 Horizon Plan. There's an aerial showing the existing business. The proposed addition's gonna occur approximately in this location with an attached breezeway to the building. There is the site plan, again, showing the existing building. There's a concrete pad here with the new addition. A few pictures, that's the existing building and the parking. That's the closest residential house to the south of the property, looking south on Triplet Road, directly across the street, and looking north back up toward seventy. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Any questions or comments, board members?
Just a comment, in almost twenty-two years, I think this is the smallest parcel of property that I've ever dealt with. I walked out of the house thinking about this very thing this afternoon. I looked at my neighbor's garage. I think his garage is about seven hundred and eighty square feet. These are honorable people. A lot of good people wouldn't even bother to ask you, Mr. Todd. They'd have just done it.
Well, it certainly looks like a well-maintained piece of property.
Yes, it does.
No further comments? Open the public hearing. Once again, I do not have anyone that has signed up to be heard, and I would canvas those present if anyone would desire to be heard. Seeing or hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. Any further comment? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to recommend the approval of this request for expansion of this non-conforming use and to advise that it meets the criteria for the section fifteen point five of the Iredal County Land Use Development Code.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Todd. Moving on to item eight, administrative matters that are, that we heard at the pre-agenda meeting and which were appropriate for consideration on consent agenda. Mr. Smith, if you'd please summarize each of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is a request from Iredal Statesville Schools to make a change in the deed for the property adjacent to the South Iredal High School to reflect Iredal County as the owner of the land purchased by, from Children's Hope Alliance. A request from Iredal Statesville Schools to change the scope of work for the Energy United Lease for Energy Conservation Controls, and this would change the project from West Iredal Middle to East Iredal Middle. A request from the Finance Department to proceed with refunding two thousand and eight cops, and this will bring a net present value savings of over eight point eight million dollars over the course of that bond. A request from the Finance Department to accept an offer to purchase and authorization to begin upset, the upset bid process on the house owned by the county on Scott Creek Road. A request from Administration to appoint Tommy Bowles as the voting delegate for the one hundred and ninth NCA-CC Annual Conference. A request from Tax Administration to approve refunds and releases, and a request for approval of the June twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen minutes.
Okay. Any comment? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, Chairman.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we do have an announcement of three vacancies. On, one is the Iredal County Board of Adjustment. Mr. Alan Boyce has resigned, and we thank him for his service. The second announcement is for the Iredal Alexander Kataba County Farm Service Agency County Committee, and leave Mr. Doug Carrigan's position, and he is willing to continue to serve if there are no other candidates. We do need to have this nomination in by August first. Are we gonna have time to process that before our next meeting? I don't think so.
We haven't gotten anyone, and I want to mention on this one, Mr. Chairman, that on the letter from Keith Miller, which is the third page, there's a specific area that this candidate would have to come from. It's the LAA three, which includes Statesville, Chambersburg, Falls Town, Behringer, Davidson, Cottle Creek townships. So basically, Statesville South would be the area, so it can't be just anyone in the county.
Is this a, our next meeting is in early August. It's the second. I think we can squeeze out another day on this. Let's go forward with the announcement, and we will consider the appointment on the second of August. Also, we have an announcement for Partners Behavioral, Behavioral Health Board of Directors. Our former Register of Deeds, Matt McCalls, has resigned from that position. All of these positions, we would invite any members of the public that are so interested to visit the county website and to obtain a application, and we will consider those in due course at our next meeting on August the second. We have one appointment to a board. That is, Mr. Jeffrey Eads is replacing Stephanie Fundaburk on the Partners Behavioral Health Board Representative. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we appoint Mr. Jeffrey Eads to replace Ms. Stephanie Fundaburk on the Partners Behavioral Health Representative on JCPC.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously, and we thank Ms. Fundaburk for her service to the community.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt just a moment? I've been given the high sign by Ms. Rice that she needs a formal approval of the item that she presented tonight.
We'll return to item six A. That is requesting approval of the Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan. Is there a motion?
I would make that motion. Mr. Chairman, I was under the mistaken impression that Ms. Rice was sitting here enjoying the meeting, offering that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously, and you are released from further attendance.
I thought she was having a good time.
Moving on to item nine, any unfinished business? I'm not aware of any to come before the commission. This is item, actually, that was item eleven. Item twelve is the public comment period that we have on the second meeting of every month. Do we have anyone signed up? No one has signed up. I will ask the audience, is there anyone who would like to be heard? Hearing none, we will move on to the next item of new business. Is there any new business? Hearing none. Mr. Smith, if you'll please render the county manager's report.
I said it was gonna be short earlier, but I added a couple of things. Just a quick update on the jail. I'm gonna give you these every once in a while, but we're moving along. You will be receiving a plan at our next meeting, just kind of going through some of the pre-construction, and then through construction, I'll say changes that we're proposing, because the, the new building is going to seriously impede the parking and pedestrian traffic coming in and out of the front of the, current front of the building. So that's, that's kind of our next step and what we've been working on for the last few weeks. Speaking of the jail you have in front of you, your jail population report, and if you look at the backside, we've seen the summer, the summer spike, which we generally see every year. This one's pretty high. On the Public Safety Building, it's kind of running parallel to the jail project, and that project, you had given me the authority to negotiate and sign the contract with Edipus ADW at a previous meeting. Haven't gotten there yet. We have, if you remember with the jail, we kind of got a high number that we did not expect. Well, we got the same thing with Public Safety. However, the staff has pulled together, and we've really gone through and done our own value engineering prior to entering into that contract. Did not want to enter into negotiations on a contract, but the number that we did not, that was over our budget. So we've been working on that internally. I think that we are very close, if not where we need to be on that, so I expect in the next couple of weeks that'll be signed, and we'll be moving, moving ahead. Just a couple of, one, one other thing I'll tell you, building permit information, if you have not had a chance to look at the activity reports. Been pleased to see that it's been keeping constant, and more importantly, at least in my mind, commercial development continues to be very strong. We've seen several months that have pushed us very high, and we've, we're very close at mid-year to our total revenues from a commercial standpoint for the entire year of the last two entire years, not combined, but individually. So good sign there. Want to let you know that I am going to be sending out a correspondence to the volunteer fire chiefs and Board of Director chairs, just to let them know where we are in our process. You know, you hear a lot through the grapevine, and I want to kind of get the information out, where, where we're at, what we're planning to do, and, and try and, you know, open up the lines of communication on that. So that is all I have.
I think I speak for everyone in expressing appreciation to the staff for the many hours they've put in, both on the jail project and on the Public Safety Building, to be able to work down the numbers and to be creative in terms of design and accommodation of the mission, not sacrificing quality, but looking for opportunities for savings when it doesn't compromise the mission. So I know that, that consumes a considerable amount of time from the staff that pop in occasionally, and there's always a meeting going on. Anything else for the good of the order? All hearts free. At this point in time, we will recess until Tuesday, July twenty-six at six p.m., where we will be meeting at four forty-four Bristol Drive in Statesville at the Agricultural Center, where we will be able to receive a report to the people sponsored by the Cooperative Extension.
That at six o'clock?
That's at six o'clock.
That's correct.
Okay, so we are adjourned.
Thank you. Good luck.
Reciced.
Pretty good.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for taking care of us.